All right, how we're gonna do this last hour or last 40 minutes. We have one more issue which is a vehicle issue. We will cover that. We will allow Ms. McDonald to respond. Then we will open it up for general questions. The city owns several vehicles and some of these are city-owned and some are car allowances. And we seem to be spending a lot of money on vehicles. Because, of course, some of these expenses may be necessary, but let's look at some that may not be. Comparing the department's staffing level in the 2010 executive budget summary to a vehicle inventory report from November of that same year, some departments have more city-owned vehicles than employees. For example, the Parks Department lists one and a half full-time employees, not including any clerical staff, but has three vehicles assigned to it. Building Inspection has four full-time employees, again, not including clerical, and five cars assigned to it. And none of these include the three available pool cars. Our garage costs exceed $1.3 million each year for labor, parts, and fuel. And that doesn't include insurance. Surely, we have enough vehicles to go around, but if we still give eight employees a car allowance. Your position on this was that the employer is required to provide the tools necessary to perform a job and that it is cheaper to provide a car allowance than mileage reimbursement. We've seen no objection data to support that. I'm sorry, objective data to support that. It surely can't be cost-effective to provide access to city-owned vehicles plus a car allowance. Is the city prepared to take steps to reduce vehicle costs? And if so, when can we expect the plan?
I think there's actually a couple of issues in this question. When we look at the total number of vehicles that the city has on their books, it looks like a lot of cars. It looks like a lot of trucks. It looks like a lot of fire equipment and police equipment. When you really break down what those vehicles are used for and which staff members use them on a regular basis, then it becomes very small in nature. We do not have extra cars. We do have two in a pool. Those pool cars are used by staff to do traveling outside of the city or to do various errands when it's on. Not on a regular basis, but they can use those vehicles. We do not allow them to use their own vehicles for travel if one is available. That is a policy of the city. When you're looking at the administrative people that have car allowances, it is because myself and the directors are required to oversee a very large department in a very large city. We're frequently at meetings at night, early in the morning before work starts, and we are required to respond in hours for different types of emergencies if necessary. We have found that if we provide a car, say you provide a car for me instead of a car allowance, that you have the car purchase itself, you have the insurance, you have maintenance, you have gas, you have all the other elements. We may not have provided the detailed analysis to you on that, but we aren't the only city that goes through that and has done it in the past. So, I can do it if you really, really want it. But is that really the point here? Because if you provide a small allowance for me to be able to use my car, well, okay, I'm not supposed to use me, am I? Sorry. For the administrative staff in the city, we do still believe that that is a less cost. If you don't want to buy, if the citizens don't want to buy the staff a car, then you would be required to pay mileage. And mileage rate is 50 cents, what is it now? Around 50 cents a mile. When we start looking at the number of miles for all the trips that we do and all the places that we go, that 50 cents adds up very, very quickly. For example, I took a trip to Columbus and anything over 50 miles is reimbursed. So, I had gone so far away from Columbus that when I got back, I got a check for $30 to reimburse me for mileage. So, if I look at all the miles that I put on my personal car within the city and I start doing a 50 cent per mile, you have to sort of calculate on how many miles am I going to travel in an average year before it's more cost-effective for me to use a city-owned car? But why would I buy a city-owned car? Why would I use taxpayers' money to do that? So, it's a philosophical decision that's done by city council. It is one that has long stood the test of time in many, many jurisdictions. Actually, we did a salary survey recently and found out that 77% of those surveyed, and I think there were 18 different municipalities, 77 provided a mileage allowance to their administrative staff, and only four of them provide an actual car. That was Oakwood, who can afford it? Kettering? Trying to think of the other two. But they're very wealthy communities that can provide those kind of cars. I don't think our community can afford that. And I don't think that we should be spending money on a car for me to use or the staff to use, the administrative staff, when we can provide them an allowance that says, "We ask you to do your job any day, any time of the day, to respond from any place you are and to go to different meetings. So, this is how we're going to compensate you for that," rather than giving you a vehicle. We do not have extra vehicles just sitting around. All of them are used for specific purposes. You have to realize, we have many, many, many departments and only two cars available for people to use to travel outside of the city. It's a decision of council. I know it's that some of you disagree with that decision, and we'll just have to respectfully disagree because it is, I think, still in the best interest of our city to provide an allowance to those people that we expect to respond 24/7. Dan?
Would you mind explaining how, when the city purchases a new vehicle, who gets the new vehicle and who gets the hand-me-downs?
Okay, that's a good idea as well. You know, we've really been very frugal about how much money we spend on vehicles, and a lot of them all start as police vehicles. We buy them brand-new, either out of the city budget or through a grant, but they start as those vehicles. And they're used for two years by the police department, and then they're used in ancillary period for another year, but those are the hand-me-down cars. And so, what happens is, we buy four police vehicles every year, except last year we didn't have the funds to buy them, so we kind of got off schedule. But we take those four cars and move it down to the next line, to the next line, to the next line. I can tell you that our garage, even though we spend, the city spends a lot of money in our garage, that is to service every single vehicle that we have in our fleet, every single one. And our garage does such a good job that they're getting 10 to 15 years out of a vehicle where the average person would get three to five. So, they are very adamant and very determined to do as much management of that fleet to keep it for as long as possible. So, we're really not buying cars all the time. Again, it doesn't make sense. If I'm gonna buy for a city staff member a $20,000 or $30,000 car, and I mean that from the amount that you spend on it, the maintenance and all those, the gas and everything, it doesn't make sense because the allowance is $5,000 or in some cases, $1,800. So, the allowance is based on where you go, how often you go, and most of them, there's a couple on here, this list is, say, $3,000, and I'm not sure, sometimes there's a couple of things in the same budget line item, so when you're pulling it out of a public document, you might not be able to pull all of it out. Because I can tell you that there's three on here that say $3,000, and that's not true. It's $1,800 for all of them except for me. What? No. Can you say no? But anyway, I think the justification, I mean, we could run the numbers if it's really that much of an interest to you, but I think just logically that you could understand that spending a lot of money for a vehicle doesn't make sense.
I have a question. Donna, Hannah first.
Well, I talked to, my name's Donna Wilson. I talked to Barlow when this issue came up in the OR, and the last four police cars that we got, which were two years ago, right, were gotten paid for entirely by a brand. So, that costs the city nothing. We didn't have to match it, nothing. Also, all of the, a lot of the cars for administrators are taken during drug busts. Is this correct or they're?
No.
The drug cars only can go to the police department.
Okay. Well, all of the police department, if they're use any cars, those are gotten entirely free from that kind of.
Correct.
Okay.
The issue that I had was, had nothing to do with downtown travel and only minimally concerned with car allowance. The problem that I have is when you take a handful of departments that have about 12 and a half full-time employees and there are 17 sedans, not police cars or fire trucks, sedans, 17 of them for 12 and a half employees in a handful of administrative departments, and then we have on top of that, car allowances paid to people. It's nonsense that there aren't enough vehicles to pass around them. They're passed out like deliverments, apparently. I mean, there's, and, you know, with all due respect, the document that listed who gets the car allowance and what they're paid is the city document specifically on car allowances. So, I'm not sure, you know, why I wouldn't know that that many people do in fact receive that, but I don't care if someone gets a car allowance. I care if they get a car allowance plus they already have access to a vehicle that's city-owned.
Oh, then that's really simple. They don't.
Well, then what, how do 12 and a half people drive 17 sedans?
Well, I'm not sure where you got your numbers. I know that when we were talking with folks about the levy, there were some folks that actually came into my office and said, "I don't understand why you have so many cars sitting out in your parking lot." And I said, "Okay, well, let's run through it and see who uses those cars and what they're used for." So, we have three people in our building department, and we're very, very active in our building department. So, if you look at the activity that we have relative to Greed County and the Miami Valley, we're more busy than everyone else. So, we have three people. Each of them have a car. Those are three. We cannot ask them to share a car because they need to be in various parts of the city at various different times. So, what's not getting done if we look at sharing, and that's one of the things that I discussed with the citizen that came in. We have four people in our engineering department who each use a car. Again, each of them are independent and they're all responsible for different activities, and they are in various parts of the city at different times. I cannot ask them either to share a car because it doesn't make sense because there's work that's not going to get done if they have to wait on somebody to come back. So, they too have a car. We have, we have two people.
Does the city engineer also get a car allowance? He's one of those four people, he's also on the list to get a car allowance. That's the problem. He's given the car to the city and he's giving it back.
I'd have to check into that one specifically, but if I may finish. We have two people that do code enforcement. At one time, we had three. We're down to two now. So, there's three cars there. Again, we're asking them to be in various parts of our city at different times and run their own schedule. They cannot be sharing a car. So, when you look at the grand scheme of all the cars that we have, they are allocated to a staff member who is responsible for using that car during regular business hours. And so, they're not available to administrative staff to take whenever they want to go. If you look at the administrative staff that get a car allowance, then we are also very busy and out at meetings and meeting with people and doing various things. So, we have to have transportation to get there. If it's being used by a code enforcement officer or a building department person, an engineer, our community development department, we can't, two people can't be using the same car at the same time. So, it may look like we have a lot, but we also have a lot of jobs that are being done. And so, they're allocated places except for the two cars that we do have that are used as the, okay, I just had a brain fart, but, the pool part, thank you. But those are not something that we can use administratively on a regular basis every day. Yes, ma'am?
And in your defense, I'm a fleet mechanic, and it is standard practice to have one spare for every 10 vehicles that you have on the road.
Thank you.
The bottom line, the bottom line is that it costs the city $1,338,457 for the two, the cost of allowance plus the two funds, not including insurance. I'm not saying that's a lot or little. It does sound awful lot for a city of 32,000 people. But I don't know. It can be cut down.
Do you have, do you have how many vehicles we have in the city on your list?
I have approximately 245.
That's a lot.
Yeah. But it includes everything. It includes police cars, it includes fire engines, it includes everything.
We provide a service for, we provide mechanic services. Again, like I said, our garage does spend that money, but all of those activities are billed out to the department that it serves. So, although we have a million dollars in the budget, ultimately, the fire department, the police department, community development, you know, each of the department pays their fair share of that department. And then, but we get, because we have the staff, we're paying less money because the cost of those employees is far less than going to a mechanic shop. So, we did look at outsourcing it to see if we can, it could be better for us. And we get far more life out of those vehicles than anybody else. I mean, these guys are our coworkers. They really are. Yes?
I'm Andy Wilson. I just have a question related to this $1.3 million. That includes the parts that they use also?
That's parts, labor. I think the fuel's on a different file, isn't it?
The fluids, the oils.
Oh, yeah.
The oils and chemicals and stuff, so.
Everything.
Yeah. For 200 vehicles to keep them on the road, parts for fire engines and snowplows and some of the specialized parts for dump trucks and things are not cheap.
Right.
Just this agreement that you'll check and those who are receiving car allowances and have access to their own vehicles, but that double-dipping no longer occurs?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be happy to agree to that.
Hey, we got agreement. That's one.
Yes, Frank?
I thought I heard you say somewhere about 50 cents a mile on reimbursement?
I think that's the federal level.
I've sent a tax bill that put a low for reimbursement, 19 cents a mile.
That's a lot.
That's a different, that's a different rate.
Well, I mean, how is that, I mean, if it's the use of my vehicle, I'm not allowed by the federal government, it's only 19 cents a mile. How is it more for somebody else?
That's a federal rate of reimbursement for employees that is established. I don't know what it is.
It's 58 cents.
It's common.
Actually, 58 cents.
I don't know the precise regulation that it sets that, but the federal government says how much you reimburse for business travel. And it's 45 or 50 cents.
58 cents. 58 cents.
Oh.
I use it.
Okay, 58 cents now.
I can verify that from where I used to work. We worked for, where I used to work when we filled out our expense reports, if we, and it was a private company or a private corporation, not a government organization, when we filled out our expense reports, if we used our own vehicle, the reimbursement rate was over 50 cents a mile.
Right, but I worked in a government office too. We had a massive office. We had one vehicle. And you either got it or you didn't. And if you didn't get it, you rode your own car and you turned in your mileage. We weren't handed sedan all day long because we had to run an errand. And that's just insane.
Do we have any other questions or comments about the vehicles? Yes?
Would people come front and around, speak up, turn ramp or something so the rest of us can hear?
Well, you should have come early because we've already discussed it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and I still can't hear.
Thank you for being such a good sport. Okay, we're gonna open this up for general questions, and we've already had one from the audience at the break. An audience member would like Ms. McDonald to talk about future economic development of Fairborn, and then we'll open it up to the rest of you.
Well, that's really crisp, but I'll launch it for you. I think that what we want to do as a community from an economic development standpoint is really look at the assets that we have here and how we market this to the outside world. Because we need to be touching that outside world in a way that we've never touched it before. We have a great and wonderful partnership with our Chamber of Commerce, and I think that we have new partnerships developing with Chris and what he is trying to do for the city in order to get us into the economic game, if you will. We know that there's a lot of areas in our community that are just ripe for new business development, improvements that will stimulate business growth. And I think that just being able to capture the essence of our small businesses that are here and help them is something that we want to focus on. With the downtown redevelopment, we're hoping that that will breathe new life into downtown and will really stimulate a lot of activity down there and help those businesses capitalize on that investment that we're making down there. But there are a lot of other areas that we need to pay attention to. So, when Chris talks about doing a website, one of the things that we want to focus on most is what sites are available for our businesses? What kind of businesses would best be suited there that can be sustainable over the long term? And who's gonna bring in the best and highest quality jobs for the residents that live here and the people that surround us and support Fairborn? We want to look at, quite frankly, what areas are not so attractive in the city and what are we going to do about them? Because if we don't eliminate the blight that's in our areas, it's going to drive down our ability to sell this community to the outside world and to really capture some of the new business we know is on the horizon. But we think we deserve it here in Fairborn. So, it's a whole new directive. It's a whole new effort. Code enforcement has been, it was one of the previous questions that hasn't really come up today, but we want to focus on having a game plan for code enforcement that makes sense, that tackles the areas that have the biggest challenges, help partner with the people to improve their properties, take down buildings that are no longer needed and make way for the new that could possibly come in here. We want to partner with the CIC, which is our Community Improvement Corporation, and we want to bring some pretty big minds to sit on that board who know how to do business development and know how to interact with the folks that are coming here and help them leverage the tools that they have as a board, as a corporation, for bonding and purchasing property and leveraging that into the future for our benefit. It's just, you know, economic, this community is just right, just right. And I know that 444, that was an issue that kind of came up, what's gonna happen when they close down the road? Well, I've always looked at that as the best thing that's happened at Fairborn since the road went in. Because you need to drive that traffic into our city, and we need that to go by our businesses. And so, how can we capitalize on that traffic and how can we educate them about where to go and how to get into our city and what services that they need? We're partnering more and more with Wright-Patt, and we're saying, "What is it that you need? What do the airmen need that are living now in the Kitty Hawk area? And how can we bring them into our community and make them feel like Fairborn is home and that we can provide the services that they're looking for while they're here for whatever term that they're here?" We're reaching out to Wright State University and we're saying, "What are your plans for growth and where are you going? And how can we, as a city, be a better partner with you? How can we provide the things that we do as a city, which is housing and roads and infrastructure, to allow you to do what you do best, which is education and research and development? And how do we partner that together?" So, we've got Calamityville, which I know, I've had a lot of, you know, some good comments and some, "Why aren't they doing more?" But I can tell you that Calamityville is just thriving with the educational opportunities they're providing at that side. And this is the year we will finish our environmental cleanup. It's actually just a couple of weeks away. And then we'll do a little bit of paperwork and turn that property over to Wright State. But they are developing some incredible programs that's not only focused on just education, but also research and development. So, they are forging partnerships that in the long run are gonna come back to benefit the city because people are going to want to come to Fairborn and locate their business here to be a part of Calamityville, a part of Wright State, and what's happening at the base. So, economically, we want that website and we want some of these tools that we're desperately needing so that we can be that player and pull it all together so that in five years we'll look back and go, "Wow, what really hit Fairborn." We're starting to get a little bit of that feedback from our outside community because we're getting much better coverage in our paper. Thank you very much. And there's a lot of stories that are going out that are saying, "Hey, Fairborn, Fairborn, Fairborn." And so, that's what we're really focused on for economic growth. I think Chris is the right person to lead this, and I think he's a really good team builder, and I think he's reached out to so many people, and having him leading that is gonna be really important for us. I'm not really sure what else you want to know. Yes, ma'am?
On projects, on businesses like Cracker Barrel, it has a certain front.
Yes, ma'am.
And they were not, they were not accepted because it wouldn't change it to bricks or something. Are we still in that mood or is let Cracker Barrel come in for what, say, for example, for what it really is? We could make a minute on that alone.
Yeah, let me, that was before Deb. But I can tell you that, I heard that story when I first came, and I can tell you that Cracker Barrel.
Would you please repeat the question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't know what you're talking about.
I'm sorry. Okay, the question was, for businesses like Cracker Barrel, in the review stage, are we now being critical of what we allow into our city or not allow into our city so that we're not driving out businesses such as Cracker Barrel? Did I summarize that right?
It was about the facade.
It was about the facade. Cracker Barrel does wood facades, and we wanted brick, and so there was debate on that.
And we lost them.
Anna, do you want to speak before I answer?
I want to speak next.
Okay. That happened before, and I can tell you that Cracker Barrel, as a company, was looking at three sites. The one that they went to, Fairborn, and another one near Springfield. And they were doing their business modeling to develop one of three sites, but they did their homework on all of them. The documents in the planning file show that Cracker Barrel and the city reached agreement on how that was gonna look. Cracker Barrel did not choose the city of Fairborn, not because we didn't reach an agreement on the facade, but because their business model supported more traffic and higher disposable incomes in the location that they chose, which was down at Exit 7. So, we did not really drive them out, although I know that that's been really hurt for a lot of folks in town. We have reached out to Cracker Barrel, several people have, actually, a lot of citizens have. Cracker Barrel is not building in the state of Ohio at all anymore. So, we're kind of out of that game. I can tell you, there's a developer that's working on some issues for us, and he's gone back to them and said, "Yeah, need to rethink because we really think that there's an opportunity here at a location in Fairborn for that specific company." More to the point, we are no longer creating that sort of a scenario with our planning documents that's going to drive businesses out. So, we do still support the mix of building materials that we're looking for, but we're not as hard as we may have once been. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I am sorry they didn't choose Fairborn. Yes, ma'am?
In regards to state highway projects and federal highway projects, when they're gonna improve a highway because they think it's gonna get more traffic, they add lanes, they take curves out, they make it safer. That's exactly what's going on with I-75 down in Dayton. And that gets more traffic and more possible people to stop at your exits. The 444 issue is not an improvement. When you look at that picture of it, it's taking the state highway, turning it over in Dayton, drive with narrow roads, more traffic's going across railroad crossings than going over to Central Avenue. What it is, is gonna be a humongous change of traffic pattern, and we have to position our stuff to make the best use of that traffic pattern. That's what the opportunity is. To say it's a good thing for this community is just illogical. It's a good thing it would capitalize on the change and on proacting, if they have like $2 million already set aside to match funds that the state and the federal government are gonna give us, we would be a lot farther ahead than we are today. That's my opinion on 444. I've been watching it since day, the former, Mr. Cornell told me it was gonna come about, and it's gonna be the biggest highway change for anybody in the downtown, the historic districts in their lifetime. districts in their lifetime. So how do we capitalize on it?
Thank you. Yes, Jean?
Yes, I approached, I first heard about this, I approached Steve Austria about it, thinking you go to Congress or go to Pentagon and find out why, because we were told the base is closed because of security reasons. My husband has said, "It's a security reason, someone could sit over at 235 over by the Bryant Theater, lop missiles down to the area, kill whatever generals is down there. They can sit over at Kaufman and lop missiles." So don't understand why this is such a security. And so I talked to Steve Austria about it, I talked to county commissioners, and he said, "Well, if the city of Fairborn isn't fighting it, then we won't do anything about it." So that's where we stood there. When I talked to a council member a couple of years ago, I saw him at Kmart, and I said, "Do you realize how much traffic is going to be stopped in the middle of town? If they're going to reroute them down Central and on railroad tracks, they'll be stopped back up there in the town, it's going to be good for the business, because if they're stopped there, maybe then they'll get out and shop, I don't know." I was told, "Well, there's only two trains on that track a day." And I said, "Now, where is it? Can you come over?" He said, "That's what he was told." And I said, "Can you come over?" He said, "In our backyard in summer. We're out in the evening for a couple hours, working in the yard, and just sitting there." And I said, "There's at least two trains, I said, "A couple hours." I said, "There's trains all the time." I said, "What are you going to do? You have these trains going through here, back the traffic, I'm sitting there on Central, waiting across the tracks, they'll be backed up quick to the light pole." And he didn't answer. He said, "Well, we'll handle that," and that's what I got. So that's what I'm curious about. How is this...
Yeah, we know that there's significantly more trains than that per day. We also know that they don't hold up traffic for an extended period of time, but they do hold up traffic. I think there's 20, 30 trains a day. I mean, it's a lot, there's a lot of trains. I think if we really want to look at how much traffic is going to be held up on Central Avenue, we have to look at how is traffic really held up on Zena? And so, because it's kind of the same, the same train, it's just here's Zena and here's Central. I think there's also this misconception about how much traffic, we're talking about diverting in onto the city streets, because the base statistics have shown that 80% of the traffic that is traveling north from the Dayton area on 444 is going to get off anyway at Gate 15 or Gate 12. So they're not, they're not traveling all the way.